This meeting of Norwood City Council was hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance, that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to note that the Boy Scout Troop 9 from Holy Trinity Church is here this evening or in the process of earning their citizenship in the community badge, so welcome, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate that you're here. And I gave them all your names and phone numbers, so if they have any problems or questions, they can call you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Whittington?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Thornbury?
Here.
Mr. Sankar?
Here.
All members are present. We have several amendments to the agenda. First, in Section J, introductory readings of ordinances, we'd like to add an ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 33-2014 to establish stormwater assessments. The second one is an ordinance amending Section 14 of Ordinance 18-2009 to extend the Community Reinvestment Area Program. Number 3 is an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for grant funding through the Ohio Department of Transportation for safe routes to school. The fourth is an ordinance creating and establishing the Stormwater Management Fund. And the fifth, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1.2 million in notes. Under J-1, introductory readings of ordinances, a resolution urging the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments to fund a feasibility study and corridor analysis of higher-speed rail service between Cincinnati and Chicago, and so on. Number 2, a resolution supporting the Wasan Way Bicycle Path. Resolution 3 that is on your agenda, I'd like to move, there is a, I would like to have Dawn Gardner, who is from Cincinnati Children's Hospital, to do a brief presentation, and then there is a resolution number 3 that follows that. Under Section O, we would add Letters 2, 3, and 4 on your amended agenda is a letter from the mayor regarding mayor's court fines for February 2015. No, I'm sorry, January 2015. A letter from Mark Guttenag regarding a carryout liquor permit Trex transfer, and then a letter from the Economic Development Trex Transfer Form. Mr. Clark?
I move to amend the agenda as you stated.
Seconded by Mr. Thornbury, is there any discussion?
We have a question.
I'm sorry, and we're going to add an administrative report as well.
We made up two here.
Please.
Did we say January twice or was it for February?
There are two. One is an amended, the one we got in our packet, our, the amended report. Okay. The amended report for January 2015, and then the second is for February 2015. I apologize. So we, I was correct the first time, so.
Sorry, ma'am.
The first one, the letter from the mayor, is one that we got in our PDF packet that was emailed to us. That was an amended January report. And then Letter 2 is the mayor's court fines for February 2015. Mr. Clark, that's, meet your approval?
Yep.
Mr. Thornbury? All right. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye. We'll move on to minutes of the February 10, 2015, meeting. Just make a note that on Page 2, under K-1, the introductory reading of ordinances, Mr. Mumper sec, Mr. Mumper made the motion, and he seconded it, according to these rules, but much as we like that he moves the meeting along, we checked, and Mr. Mumper made the motion, and it was seconded by Mr. Thornbury. So if you'll make those changes, we'll move on to consideration. Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, ma'am, because I move that we accept the minutes as if read.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to requests to address council, and ready to ask Dawn Gardner from Cincinnati Children's to come forward, please. Who has a broken foot, by the way.
It's getting, it's an epidural.
We appreciate that you still came. If you'll just give us your name and say, let you work at Cincinnati Children's, that's all we need.
I'm passing around now, or passing around now, copies of the presentation that I'm going to run through really quick. My name is Dawn Gardner. I'm an injury prevention coordinator at Cincinnati Children's Hospital, and I am also a proud member of Preventing Injuries in Norwood, or PEN, which is what we're going to talk about today. Just want to make sure everybody can follow along. Okay, so I promise to be brief, but informative. So, Preventing Injuries in Norwood is a hospital-community partnership that I am very proud to say is working. We have been working to put this partnership together since 2011, and we've seen great, great, great results now coming into 2015. But before I really go into those, I just want to, if you want to turn to Page 2, I just want to kind of get us all on the same page of why injury prevention is even important. So to start off, when you look at some of the nursery rhymes that we've been singing generation after generation after generation, not so much about injury prevention. As this child is saying, "Stop singing 'Rock-a-bye baby' to put me to sleep." I mean, a song about putting a baby in a cradle in a tree, then have it come crashing down doesn't exactly make me want to close my eyes. But this is what we've been singing to our, singing to our kids generation after generation after generation. So, just something that's really funny that is definitely not about injury prevention. So a little more into the background of why we would even, why injury prevention is important. Unintentional injuries, or sometimes you hear them called accidents, are the number-one killer to kids under the age of 19. You combine all diseases together, unintentional injuries is still the number-one killer. So, it's very important, but a lot of times parents don't see that. They just see it as their child has had an accident. And so, these injuries, these unintentional injuries are preventable, whether it's the right education or the right equipment. We can stop these kids from getting injured and killed. So if you look, there has been reductions over the decades, but unintentional injury is still the leading cause of death and disability. About 42 percent of pediatric deaths are due to unintentional injury. More than 1 in 10 children are seen in emergency rooms for an injury, and over $24 million is spent on care of injured kids in Hamilton County alone. So it's huge. And then when you look at it even, even more, we focus on the kids under 5. And those kids are injured in the home most of the time. And when you think about it, they're really not in school, so they're either at home with mom, or maybe at a home daycare, or grandma's house, or aunt's house, but those kids are mostly injured in the home. And so, when we came to meet PEN, or we came to Norwood in order to try to address some of the unintentional injuries, we looked at our data in the emergency room, and we saw, as it is nationally, that kids under 5 are what we're seeing coming into our emergency room, and those kids are being injured in the home. So that, we wanted to stop that. We knew that we could stop those injuries with getting out the right education and with the right partnerships, so that's how PEN came about. So why did we choose Norwood? Norwood had the families, 832 homes with 1,150 kids that were in our age range. 92 percent of the injured children seeking emergency care going into Cincinnati Children's were from Norwood. And that's a really, really high rate. So we, it hit on our radar, and we knew that this is where we needed to be. In addition to that, Norwood has outstanding organizational leadership. I mean, it's a very organized community. It's a very open community. It's a very easy community to work with. It was a perfect fit for us, and we were accepted with open arms. So, I want to thank everybody who started, started out with us. A few PEN members in here now, so. And then, like I said, it was just a great potential for us to partner, so we knew Norwood was the place that we wanted to be. So, once we got the partnerships and got everybody around the table, how did we decide that we were going to get to these kids? How are we going to engage them? And what we decided was to do what's called a Safety Day. And what we do for Safety Day is we schedule them, maybe about two times a year, normally in May and in October. We recruit volunteers from the community, from the hospital, from some of our sponsoring partnerships, which I'll talk about briefly. We recruit volunteers. And then while we're recruiting volunteers, we also recruit Norwood families. So, we spend a lot of time at Kroger's, kind of face-to-face. Do you have a kid under 5? Do you live in Norwood? Oh, we have, we need you. You know, do you want to partner with us? And so, this is kind of what makes up our Safety Day. Recruited volunteers, recruited families. And, once again, all organized by this PEN. This is not a Cincinnati Children's Hospital initiative. This is a partnership with Norwood. And we are very proud to say that, because sometimes we, we can come in and just kind of take over, and then it's just Cincinnati Children's. This is very much PEN, and we're very proud of that. So, we get the families, we get the volunteers, we set up a day. Our first day was Saturday, May the 12th, that we decided to do the Safety Day. So what we did was, we found a place here in Norwood, and we brought our volunteers in. We trained them that morning on how to install basic home safety equipment, which I'll talk about here in a second, but basic home safety equipment, and to provide basic home safety education. We give them a script. We have cabinets with drills, and they are hands-on training. After they're trained, we partner them up, one installer, one educator. We send them out into the pre-registered homes, normally two to three. They do the education while one's educating, the other's installing. Takes about 45 minutes. The equipment that we provide is about $100. It's free of charge to the families. We will not come back and ask them for it. We won't bill them for it. We won't come back and say, oh, we're going to take this out. It's free of charge, thanks to grants. So, go in, install the equipment, do the education. We know that that home is safer than when we came. We have, we do it all in one day, couple hours. We give them breakfast to get them to come. We give them a good lunch to get them to stay. And, you know, it's an in-and-out thing. We are able to get maybe 30 or 40 homes in one day, which is humongous. So, when we started in May, we were just doing the Safety Days. In between then, we've got some other partnerships, and, like I said, I will touch base on them. So, just part of the purpose of the Safety Day, this is the equipment that we have, that we offer. Like I said, it's about $100 worth of free equipment. Free, we give it to the families. If it's something that they can't use, or something that they already have, we encourage them to give it to a neighbor, give it to the, give it to grandma, give it to a babysitter. We just want to spread the message of safety. And we, so we give them the equipment. Like I said, we are able to install it. We also give them a safety guide that internally, at the hospital, we put together for kids under 5. We want to keep them out of our emergency rooms. That's our, that's our, that's our job. So, we try to pride the families with all the resources that we can to do that. So now we've put the Safety Day together. We have got our families, we've got our volunteers, they're out, and they're, they're doing homes. And our results are showing that the bundles are working. We had six Safety Days, starting May the 2012 to October 2014. 235 homes received our $100 Home Safety Bundle, once again, free of charge. We have seen a 59 percent reduction in injuries in those homes that we have been in. That is huge. We know our bundle is working. And then the homes that we haven't been in, where we've just provided a little education to the community, we've seen a 6 percent increase. We need to get into homes. We need to get into all the homes. Because right now, we're only at 235, and like I said in the beginning, we know that there are about like 840. So, just before I even move on, I'm putting a call out to everyone who knows, has, knows a family with kids under 5. We need them.
You don't even have to live in the home.
Right. Oh, yeah, and this is not, this is not about, this is aunts, uncles, the child doesn't even have to live in that home, but if they babysit, if they interact at all with this child, we want to protect them. Because it only takes a second, and they could just be visiting and be injured. So, any home that touches a child under 5 that lives in Norwood, we, we would like to see them. We would like them to, we'd like to engage them and get into their homes. One of the big results of this is that we no longer, we have resources outside of the Safety Day. We have an outstanding partnership with the Norwood Fire Department. So where before, we could only reach them on a Safety Day, and if we got homes in between, or if, oh, it may be a couple weeks, it may be a month before we can get to you, because we're not having another Safety Day. We have created this partnership where if we do a Safety Day on, you know, May the 12th, and then May the 14th, we get a family, we can call the fire department, and they can go in, instead of them waiting until our October Safety Day. So they have now started to really do it year-round for us, and it is working. It is a model, and we just couldn't do it without, without them. So, very proud of that partnership. Another result of our Safety Day and our PEN outreach is the publication, and I put the actual link on here, but we were in November 26, 2013, Norwood was in Forbes, just because of the outstanding work and outstanding partnership. Like I said, this has really become a model, and, and people are noticing, and people want to do what we do. So, should be very, very proud. So lastly, I just want to say thank you. We could not do it alone. Like I said, we do not want this to be a children's hospital initiative, but a partnership, and that's what it's become. So we just, thank you for allowing us to come in, thank you with open arms, and, and like I said, if you have any families under 5, we would love to, love to engage them. So, thank you.
Questions? Mr. Clark?
Is there any other stipulations besides just having a child? Like, is there an income restriction?
So, injury has no socio-economic income. You could, you could put $2,000 worth of home safety equipment in your home, your child could still get injured. So there is no, there are no socio-economic boundaries. You have a child under 5 that touches your home, and you live in Norwood, you qualify.
Mr. Thornbury?
Thank you, Madam President. You may have said it, but if someone is listening right now, who do they call? Who do they contact?
My information is on the front of the PowerPoint.
So they call this phone number?
They can call me.
They call you directly?
They call me directly.
Okay.
I put my contact information in there.
And just, and just so, for those out there, the number is area code 513-636-3153, and the email is Dawn, that's D-A-W-N-E dot Gardner at C-C-H-M-C dot org. But, what's the quickest way, I mean, if you're, you're listening to this, and you just want to go, you forget all these numbers and everything, is there someplace on the...
The Health Department. Yeah, we have a partnership with the Health Department.
So, so people should call, would call the Health Department?
And they can stop by the Health Department?
Okay.
And they, I mean, we don't encourage the fire department's phone to ring off for whatever.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, they, I mean, they definitely have a direct line to us, but the Health Department also. We have, I mean, we work with the schools, we're working with the Health Department, we're working with some of the early childhoods, so there's a lot of people who can get in touch with us, but the Health Department will probably be their first stop.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I'm sorry. Mr. Mumper?
Yeah, one question. Since you're limping, and Andrew Clark's limping, could they visit your homes?
And actually, I did have a fall down the stairs.
Mine was because of ice.
Personally, as of last month, I was over the age of 5.
So each time we see the Norwood Fire, the Norwood Life Squad going up Burnet Avenue, we all go, "No, no, don't turn into children's, no, no."
Yes, we do, and it's really sad.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a question?
What, do you list the type of accidents or injuries, or whether it be getting into cleaning, or slides, or, do you have like a list of what, what the causes are, and what the percentages are?
So, the, the number-one injury that we see are falls. That's off of, that's out of windows, that's in the bathtub, that's down the stairs. Those falls now include furniture falls, so either jumping off, a child jumping off of furniture, or furniture falling on them. That really has increased. So, TVs falling on kids, kids climbing on dressers, bookshelves, and those falling over. So that's the number-one injury. The equipment that we provide is preventative equipment, and it reaches some of the top areas, so that would be poisonings. So we provide the lock, so you can lock the, lock the poisonings up, and carbon monoxide detector, which is a poison. So we do poisonings, we do burns, so smoke detectors, we do bathtub thermometers, so there's not scald burns from a child, you know, being in water that's too hot. Poisoning falls and burns are the top three injuries that we see, with falls being the number-one.
Can we speak to the fire that happened after?
So we did have a Safety Day, and we sent some volunteers into a home that was a daycare. Once again, if they touch a child under 5, we would like to see them. It was a daycare. It is our practice, just because smoke detectors expire, and a lot of times we go into homes, and they don't, just don't have a battery in it, or the battery's beeping, and they have, they totally ignored it. So, we walk in, and it's the first thing we hear, your smoke detector's beeping, and they have gotten so used to it that they ignore it. So, we have decided, we decided that we provide smoke detectors that have a 10-year battery. So, they don't have to worry about changing it. We do ask them to check it, they don't have to worry about changing the battery for 10 years. And we, as, as protocol, we install that smoke detector, we find a place to install it, which is what we did in this daycare. She had working smoke detectors, they were everywhere, but still, we had told our volunteers, you are to find a place to install it. So, upstairs, they installed our smoke detector. About two weeks later, we got a call. She said that after we left, her smoke detectors, her smoke detectors that she had in the home started beeping. We had checked them, and they were fine, but, I mean, they can go bad at any day. She did not change the battery. Someone was upstairs, smoking, outside on her upstairs deck, flicked the cigarette up into the gutter where leaves were, popped the whole top floor of the house on fire with daycare kids downstairs, and our smoke detector was the only one that went off. So, those little stories like that, that's exactly why we do it. Exactly why we do it. It's just something not quick.
Thank you for doing it.
Well, thank you for having us. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you for having us.
Thank you. So, stay here.
Okay.
We got you here under a false pretense.
What?
So we'll move on to consideration of resolution honoring Dawn Gardner for her commitment to keeping, to keep Norwood's children safe. It's your pleasure. Mr. Mumper?
I'd like to suspend the rules and have all three readings.
First in its entirety. Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution honoring Dawn Gardner for her commitment to keep Norwood's children safe. Whereas Dawn Gardner began working at Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center in 2008 as an Injury Prevention Coordinator in Emergency Medicine, and whereas Ms. Gardner joined the Comprehensive Children's Injury Center in 2011, and began, and began meeting with various Norwood leaders to discuss rate of injury to Norwood's children, and develop a plan to address child safety, especially in the home, and whereas Ms. Gardner became an integral part of developing the concept of preventing injuries in Norwood PEN as a way to organize volunteers to install safety equipment in homes, and educate caregivers about keeping children safe, and whereas on May 12, 2012, Ms. Gardner organized the first Norwood Safety Day, where volunteers installed safety equipment and educated caregivers about child safety in various homes throughout Norwood, and whereas the success of the first Norwood Safety Day led Ms. Gardner to organize such events twice annually since 2012, with over 200 volunteers taking part since the first Safety Day, and whereas Ms. Gardner met with trained and provided safety bundles to the Norwood Fire Department, so that safety installations and education can take place throughout the year, thus embedding the program in the community, and whereas through her leadership, PEN has installed safety equipment affecting 324 children in 235 homes with children under the age of 5. Whereas such safety equipment and education has resulted in 65 fewer Norwood children injured at home, and a steady decline in the number of Norwood children seen in the emergency department, and whereas the statistical success of Norwood Safety Day and PEN were presented to over 200 physicians, providers, and other hospital staff at Cincinnati Children's Grand Rounds on February 24, 2015, and whereas Ms. Gardner has also found, for the benefit of Norwood children, funding for playground equipment, mulching, and other improvements to Norwood parks, and whereas council, the administration, and all residents of the city of Norwood wish to honor and thank Dawn Gardner for her dedication to the community and commitment to keeping Norwood's children safe, now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Norwood, state of Ohio, that this resolution recognizes, recognizes the efforts of Dawn Gardner in founding Norwood Safety Day and implementing the PEN program, her dedication to the community, and her commitment to keeping Norwood's children safe. Resolution honoring Dawn Gardner for her commitment to keep Norwood's children safe. Resolution honoring Dawn Gardner for her commitment to, commitment to keep Norwood's children safe.
Mr. Mumper?
I move the resolution to be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, I would just like to, this resolution is just a small way of saying thank you, I mean, but it is an important thank you, because the amount of time that you spent on this program actually has proven to show true results, and, you know, we're never going to be able to solve every safety issue in every home, but at least this is a start, and it's, it's an awareness thing, that as the word gets out, you know, we can, you know, keep building on that program, so we'd like to just say thank you on all, at least on my behalf.
And that's from a new grandpa.
And he should visit his house, too.
Is there any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have a copy of the resolution for you.
Andrew, can you help her out?
It's probably not enough damage.
I have the distinct privilege of working side-by-side with Dawn. She's right across the little alley, or little way, we're in Cubes, and we speak to each other all the time, where they rarely let us out together, because we tend to get into trouble when we're out together, but she does fabulous work, and I thank you again for everything that you do. Sorry to lie about it, too. We have, no reports of standing committees of council. Move on to second readings of ordinances. It's an ordinance promoting the citywide street sale and abatement of all permit fees associated with the sale. It's your pleasure. Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, I'd recommend we could have the second and third reading, but also at the end of it, if you could just at least state the dates, I didn't read it in its entirety.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have the second and third readings.
Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale and abatement of all permit fees associated with the sale. Ordinance promoting the citywide street sale and abatement of all permit fees associated with the sale. The citywide street sale will be held during, on May 1st, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., and May 2nd, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m.
So Dawn, make note, we cannot have a Safety Day on that day. Mr. Mumper?
I move the ordinance to be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to introductory reading of ordinances. The first is an ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 33-2014 to establish stormwater assessments under the Ohio EPA NPDES general permit and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mumper?
I move to suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Thornbury, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 33-2014 to establish stormwater assessments under the Ohio EPA NPDES general permit and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 33-2014 to establish stormwater assessments under the Ohio EPA NPDES general permit and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 33-2014 number 33-2014 to establish stormwater assessments under the Ohio EPA NPDES general permit and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sancker.
I recommend that the ordinance be passed.
Second by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Madam President, just as a, a note of explanation, uh, when we passed the original ordinance, um, a while back, uh, for the stormwater, uh, fees that would be coming in, in that particular ordinance, it actually stated that those funds would are going to be deposited, I believe, into Fund 55. And, um, when we were looking at that, um, that would, or would have gone into the water fund, I believe is where it was going to go into. However, that, um, that was a miscommunication. It really, um, these funds are not to go into the water fund. They're supposed to go into the, a separate stormwater, um, fund which then will take care of the fees and any, um, some of the repairs that would be done to different, uh, stormwater collection basins and things of that nature. You'll find later on, on the agenda, there is also an ordinance establishing that fund which will then allow that fund to be used specifically for, um, stormwater related issues. So, it was just said, the original ordinance, we had the wrong, um, uh, fund listed in there and that's why this is in to be changed and the new ordinance coming up later to establish the parameters for that fund. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to ordinance 2, an ordinance amending section 14 of ordinance 18, 2009 to extend the duration of the community reinvestment area program under Ohio Revised Code, section 3735.65 through 3735.70 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance amending section 14 of ordinance 18-2009 to extend the duration of the community reinvestment area program under Ohio Revised Code, sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending section 14 of ordinance 18-2009 to extend the duration of the community reinvestment area program under Ohio Revised Code, sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending section 14 of ordinance 18-2009 to extend the duration of the community reinvestment area program under Ohio Revised Code, sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark?
I move that the ordinance be passed.
Second by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, yes. While back, back in 2009, we did establish, say, that the, the CRA, which is the Community Reinvestment Area, um, Program, which allows for some, um, I guess, tax-deferent, tax-abatement type things for certain redevelopment within the city. Um, this not only pertains to businesses, but also pertains to residential folks as well. And, um, back in 2009, you see how the program works. So, we, we actually got to a point where, um, we set a date, an expiration date on it, which, uh, it seems to be a program that has some interest and actually affords businesses and residents an opportunity to take advantage of, of, uh, some abatements and/or rebates. Um, so therefore, in the ordinance, as it states, it will be, uh, in, in existence now until, uh, council deems necessary to repeal the ordinance. So, there's not a specific ending date, you know, on this particular program. So far, it's been, um, the program has worked pretty well. I didn't know if the mayor had any comment on this CRA program as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. You, you hit it exactly. I think, too, one of the things we've got to remember is this, this has paid dividends already. And in the past, as Mr. Sancker correctly alluded to, as we kept hearing, well, you're doing stuff for developers in construction and businesses. This is an incentive for property owners to invest into their property and, and receive the same benefit. The other thing about this is, um, we'll say somebody buys a home and we'll say they pay 50,000 and they put 100, a developer buys it and puts 100,000 in it and gets the CRA. That CRA is transferable. And it's an incentive for people to not only invest in their homes, but in businesses. So, it's, it's paid dividends already. And we've gotten the word out pretty well. We've talked to realtors and a few other things. So, as Mr. Sancker alluded to, this is, this is, uh, this is paid off already and, and desire to keep on with it until council and its wisdom decides to repeal it, I think is the correct way to go.
Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for grant funding through the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program to enter into a contract with the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation necessary to complete the Safe Route to School Infrastructure Improvement Program and declaring an emergency. And I'll note that Deborah Robinson is here if you have any questions of her. And I think we, um, Ms. Thornbury emailed out to you the projects. Um, yes, Mr. Sancker has that packet. Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, Deb's here. I didn't know if she would like to just give us a brief summary or overview, just update.
Ms. Robinson, can you come up? And is there a deadline for this to be to the state, I guess is another question. Always, always a deadline.
They submitted the application. This is the final piece of that.
Okay.
So, so just an overview, um, when our engineer was here last, he gave you a project that's really big, almost $2 million worth of improvements that could happen. And, um, we can only apply for 400,000. So, based on feedback that we got here and feedback that we've gotten from other places, principals, schools, um, we kind of narrowed that down to some projects that were really, um, the most pressing to kind of, to get them rolling, things that, um, could be quickly done, easily done, and get us on the right track. So, a lot of those have to do with signage and the, the flashing lights and, and appropriate flashing lights, um, some speed humps over by Williams, um, and just some corrective kinds of things that are really close to, to each of the schools. Like I said, we could only apply for $400,000 this round. So, it's about $100,000 per, um, per school is what we kind of decided on. So...
And could you speak, um, I had someone question about section 2 about that. Um, the city of Norwood, if a word of the funds further agrees to pay 100% of the construction cost over the maximum amount provided by the state of Ohio, can you talk about the contingencies that are built in?
So, when our, um, our engineer provided certified estimates for this, as part of that, he put in a 20% contingency and also built in the, the standard rate of inflation for these kind of projects. So, all of that was kind of put in place. So, as these, you know, if we're funded, that, um, for three years, that, that should be enough for whatever, whichever project is, is in your list, um, there's enough contingency money and enough, um, inflationary money to cover those costs. Um, I think that, that is in there so that we don't say, oh, let's just, you know, hold off on that and let it run up or, um, do something a little bit different. At that point, then that would be our cost to, our city's cost to pick up. Um, but if we stick to the plan, we should be fine.
Mr. Sancker.
Yeah, Deb, just a quick update. Say, this funding is, is awarded to us, what timeframe are we under to make this, this project happen or part of the projects or all of it, or is there a deadline? We have to have it done by 2017 in July or something of that nature?
Um, my understanding is that it would, um, this is, when I asked the engineer about that, he said that, um, you know, these projects don't happen kind of overnight so that we could, um, reasonably expect that it would take until 2018 for these projects to be completed. Um, so, so my understanding is that 2018 would be the, the timeframe between the time it's awarded, which is sometime this summer, and then 2018.
Okay, that was going to be a follow-up, but just so the awards will be made public by sometime in July.
I think so, yeah, because that's the fiscal year of the...
Funding cycle.
Mm-hmm. I'm hoping sooner, but that's what I suspect will happen.
Any other questions of Ms. Robinson?
This is a really nice start for us. And the thing is, is we can apply year after year for this money. And so, while the, the big plan, we can't accomplish everything at once, we can apply again for another amount of money and again for another amount and again until we kind of, um, hit all of those areas and, and really do some good work.
Mr. Sancker.
Just real quick, you just kind of hit another hot button. On, so, this is our wish list on this particular program, if I remember right. And then, say they award us 150,000 to get started on signage.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, then next year, we go back and say, hey, we did a great job on the signage.
Right.
Now, we need this to put in curb cuts or handicap accessible, this and that.
Right.
So, we need this because look how well we did on this particular part of it.
Right.
Okay.
Now, the, the travel plan, which is the, the plan that Mark presented to you all, which was many, many pages, that's the plan that the state has approved. So, um, we, we can't go back without some significant redo and say, oh, yeah, now we want to do this thing over here. But anything that's in our approved travel plan, we can go back to in our next round and say, okay, now we want to do this piece, this piece, this piece.
All right. Just follow up, just, because I would just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Mr. Sancker.
Uh, just so that we may not get all this in one year, but we would go back and reapply potentially for, for some...
My hope is that we get the 400,000 this year.
But if not, it would be something that we would go back and reapply.
We would apply next year and next year and next year. Mm-hmm.
So, the meeting today in the city of Woodland is going through the same process and just submitted theirs. And so, they're hoping to get, it's a, it's a big process. Deb, Deb has worked on it very long. She doesn't take a lot of self-credit, but she has done a lion's share of the work on this project.
But it's a good, it's a really good thing. It's a really good thing for our city. It's a really good thing for our kids who are our youngest residents. And I think, um, it can really, it, it will help our city. It will help our kids. All, it's all good.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thanks. We move to, can, ordinance is up for discussion. What's your pleasure, Mr. Clark?
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thornbury. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for grant funding through the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program to enter into a contract with the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation necessary to complete the Safe Route to School Infrastructure Improvement Program and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for grant funding through the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program to enter into a contract with the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation necessary to complete the Safe Route to School Infrastructure Improvement Program and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for grant funding through the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Safe Routes to School Program to enter into a contract with the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation necessary to complete the Safe Route to School Infrastructure Improvement Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is an ordinance creating and establishing the Stormwater Management Fund and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, I would recommend we have all, uh, three readings by caption only.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Just to follow up, Madam President, as I mentioned before, this actually will establish the parameters for the money to be dispersed for that is collected in the stormwater fund.
Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
Ordinance creating and establishing the Stormwater Management Fund and declaring an emergency. Ordinance creating and establishing the Stormwater Management Fund and declaring an emergency. Ordinance creating and establishing the Stormwater Management Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. The last ordinance is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,200,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sancker.
Uh, yes, Madam President, I'd recommend we have all three readings of this ordinance by caption only. Um, as we discussed in finance, uh, since actually last year...
Can we have a second and then we'll do the discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Mr. Mumper, you want a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Sancker.
Sorry.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Uh, as we've discussed in finance, uh, over the last couple of years, um, this is a, a direct result of, of the work that Mr. Stith has put forth, um, searching to find some, to, uh, take over some of, uh, refinancing some of our bonds. Um, so I would like to actually ask Mr. Stith if he wanted to give a little more of a detailed explanation. I know our broker is here as well. Uh, it'd be deemed fit for him to answer any questions as well, so...
Mr. Stith?
Yes, Madam President. As, uh, Mr. Sancker has stated, we've been discussing the refinancing of these bonds actually for about the past two years since we had to make the emergency, um, sale of bonds to private investors at a significant interest rate. Uh, we've decided to go with a one-year note. Uh, we have $1,770,000 due on March 27th to the private investors. We are going to borrow 1.2 million dollars and pay off an additional $570,000 out of our property tax, uh, collections that we'll be getting, thereby decreasing the amount of the city's debt by roughly a third, a little less. Uh, our intention is to do a one-year note. We can get a better interest rate. It's easier to use, move in the market. And frankly, after August of this year, we'll be finished with our two-year audit cycle with the state of Ohio finishing the past two years' worth of audits. And that'll make us more attractive to refinance a portion of this. So, we should be able to be looking for refinancing, uh, towards the end of this year so that one year from now, we can take a portion of this and refinance it, hopefully being able to pay off approximately 600,000 more of it so that we only do one more financing, thereby decreasing the amount of the city's debt over time. The initial refinancing for this has been going on several years ago. Um, just as a history, notes were originally, originally issued in 1996. They were, uh, redone in 2004, redone in 2006. At that time, we anticipated that the Rookwood Project would have significant revenue, uh, starting in 2010, 2013, or sorry, 2012, 2013, 2014. Uh, but as you know, the economy took a serious downturn in 2009 and those peak, uh, payments that we were going to be making on the payback of the initial bonds were so significant that the city would not be able to repay them. So, we refinanced a portion of the bonds three years ago, a $600,000 one-year note, and then did the, uh, 1.77 million two years ago. and then did the $1.77 million two years ago. We're in a position to start paying these off, which we have been doing, so we're refinancing a smaller amount next year, refinancing even a smaller amount, and then being done with it hopefully after that point. The note, as I said, is $1.2 million. That's backed by our property taxes. It comes out of the Bond Retirement Fund, which is segregated by the county on the collection of the property taxes. Is there any questions I can answer to this?
Questions. Mr. Sankar.
Mr. Stith, is there a particular date that we need to have this taken care of by?
March 27th.
Yes, Madam President, that is correct. My daughter's birthday, my oldest, March 27th is also another special day dear to my heart, because that's when we have to write a big check, $1,770,000. April 1st, then, is also the U.S. Bank Note, which is the original bond that we were talking about that was structured from many years ago. Its payment is due April 1st, so both of those tend to come pretty closely together. But using the property taxes with this $1.2 million, we should be able to pay those off, taking something off the table of significant amount.
Any other questions of Mr. Stith? Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,200,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes and declaring an emergency. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,200,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes and declaring an emergency. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,200,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark?
Move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to introductory reading of resolutions. The first is a resolution urging the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments to fund a feasibility study and corridor analysis of higher-speed rail service between Cincinnati and Chicago and the local transportation benefits to the Ohio and Indiana counties and communities within the OKI region that such a service improvement would directly affect. Ms. Allen?
Yes, I ask that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen?
I'll just explain what this is. We talked about this at the community development meeting, but it's, we would be putting forth basically, OKI is kind of the regional council, and the idea is that right now Amtrak doesn't have, I can't remember, and I might look to Mr. Bonzel, but there's not this, how many?
Three days.
Three days a week, there's rail to Chicago, whereas I think Indianapolis has three a day, or?
Uh, once a day.
Oh, it's just once a day, so, okay, once a day, but still, so that, it's really good for an economic development if we had more kind of direct service to Chicago. So the idea is that OKI, this is basically saying, we support a study because we think that this is an important piece of kind of economic development in the region, and just as kind of a tie to Norwood, Siemens does some of the engine parts, or what do they make exactly? I'm sorry, keep looking, because...
No, I mean, some parts of the engine.
Some parts of the engine for Amtrak. So Norwood does have a direct connection in that way. So the reason we want it for an emergency is just that we'd like to get it there as soon as possible. Wyoming is an example, they did a resolution similar, so.
Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Let's have all three readings.
A resolution urging the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments to fund a feasibility study and corridor analysis of higher-speed rail service between Cincinnati and Chicago and the local transportation benefits to the Ohio and Indiana counties and communities within the OKI region that such service improvement would directly affect. A resolution urging the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments to fund a feasibility study and corridor analysis of higher-speed rail service between Cincinnati and Chicago and the local transportation benefits to the Ohio and Indiana counties and communities within the OKI region that such a service improvement would directly affect. A resolution urging the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments to fund a feasibility study and corridor analysis of higher-speed rail service between Cincinnati and Chicago and the local transportation benefits to the Ohio and Indiana counties and communities within the OKI region that such a service improvement would directly affect.
Mr. Clark?
Move to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a resolution supporting the Wasson Way Bicycle Path and urging the City of Cincinnati to pursue the acquisition of the right-of-way, secure funding for its completion, and protect the right-of-way with appropriate zoning. Mr. Thornberry?
Yes, Madam President, move to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen?
Yeah. This, again, was brought to community development at the same time, and the idea, I mean, I think most of us know about the Wasson Way, but I'll just say what it is in case you don't, for those out there listening. It would be a, right now, a bicycle path that would basically start here, in the Norwood section, and go eventually connect with the Loveland Bike Trail. Cincinnati's in the process of negotiating with the railway to get the right-of-way. What we're doing here is asking that the appropriate zoning happens, that it's a multimodal type of zoning, which in kind of regular language is that eventually there could be a light rail there, not just a bike path, so that's important for us from an economic standpoint as well. I want to reiterate, right now, all they're looking at is doing the bike path, but it allows for the option to do light rail in the future. So we want to tell Cincinnati that we support this, so.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, question through the chair to Ms. Allen. So, you want to give an update, like, what this bike path, where it would run as far as through the city of Norwood? Is it just on the outskirts up near Dana, down Montgomery Road, or just...
Correct, okay, yep, so it's where the rail line is, right there, through the Xavier's New Development, and I actually, if it's appropriate, I don't know if it is now, but Jay Andres, who is working with Wasson Way, is here, I don't know if he could say just a couple of words about it.
Mr. Andres?
Okay. If you could just give us your name and who you're associated with, or an address. My name's Jay Andres. I'm the president of the board of the Wasson Way effort, and we're really excited about bringing this effort to Norwood and Cincinnati. I think it's going to make a tremendous difference. And on March 26th, we're having a community meeting for Norwood at the Williams Elementary School, and we hope that you'll be able to attend, and we're looking for input from the residents of Norwood on the construction of the bike trail.
What time is that meeting?
It's 6:30 at the Williams Avenue Elementary School.
And then you had asked, Ms. Allen, if you could talk about, like, where it would run through Norwood.
Yeah, it's a Norfolk Southern right-of-way. It starts at the I-71 Bridge by Dana and comes through the Norwood Depot area, crosses Montgomery Road near Dana and Montgomery, and then goes through, was it University Station, I think is the name of it, and then crosses Dana down by Listerman's, and then goes south west to Walnut Hills High School near Victory Parkway. It would be a really significant change. Great opportunity. It will hook up to the Little Miami Bike Trail at the extreme eastern end, and then eventually Clifton at the western end.
Mr. Sankar.
Quick question, yep. So basically, it's kind of like a Dana Avenue, run along Dana Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, very much.
As far as running through University Station, I mean, is Xavier aware that where it's going to go through that particular property? Is it not going to run right through one of those new buildings they just built, is it?
No. One of the benefits of the railroad being so difficult with the acquisition of the right-of-way is that the right-of-way was preserved through University Station, so there was a benefit there, actually.
Any other questions of Mr. Andres? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Excuse me. The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
A resolution supporting the Wasson Way Bicycle Path and urging the City of Cincinnati to pursue the acquisition of the right-of-way, secure funding for its completion, and protect the right-of-way with appropriate zoning. A resolution supporting the Wasson Way Bicycle Path and urging the City of Cincinnati to pursue the acquisition of the right-of-way, secure funding for its completion, and protect the right-of-way with appropriate zoning. A resolution supporting the Wasson Way Bicycle Path and urging the City of Cincinnati to pursue the acquisition of the right-of-way, secure funding for its completion, and protect the right-of-way with appropriate zoning.
Mr. Clark?
Move that the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornberry?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to administration reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I know this is difficult for you, but try to bear with me. I'd like to take you back about two weeks or a week to 10 days when we had snowstorms, three snowstorms over a period of a week. Just as an update, we tried to put out on Facebook what our situation was with vehicles and personnel. We got through it. We probably had seven water leaks during that time. We had to put the water crew on from old taps and et cetera. They got all those accomplished. The trucks, of course, were breaking down, but they managed to keep them running. One of the complaints we heard was places like Grandview and the smaller streets were not getting hit. Well, it took longer than normal. Well, that's, during the path of a snowstorm, as Joe and I talked about, each snow event is different. The weather conditions changed, you know, the moisture content in the snow, the cold air, it all changes, so you attack each event as experience tells you to. In the past, sometimes they would just plow and throw salt, and then go back and plow the salt off, and go, so in these long-term events where you're going to get heavy snow, we just keep plowing until we figure it's going to break, and then we plow in salt. One of the trucks we used for smaller streets such as Grandview, Dead End, Hunter, and something, you know, areas like that where you can't get these large plows down through there, was broke down. And so the device they used to spread the salt had to be taken off of the truck, the bed of the truck had to be taken off, the fuel tank had to be taken off, so a new fuel pump could be put in. So that threw us behind schedule. But all in all, in comparison to the City of Cincinnati, and watching it on the news, watching the news coverage every two blocks, there was somebody with a camera and a light on telling you it was snowing, which I didn't know, and they were thankful enough that they told me that it was snowing. And you could see the conditions of the street deteriorating, so we did have some mechanical problems, but we managed to get it back. And I know it wasn't perfect to everybody, but when you get out, when you drive around, you see that, you know, we were no different than anybody else, and we were operating with a third of the equipment per capita that everybody else has. So Joe Gears and Pete and those guys in that department down there did a good job, and I mean that sincerely. The other issue I want to bring up, usually we don't, we stay out of school business, but I want to tell you this, you know, I want to recognize Robert Modio, the school superintendent, because, you know, calling a snow day on schools with snowstorms and cold weather is a difficult situation. There's a lot that goes into it, and I'm sure, and I've talked to Mr. Modio in the past, the safety of those children is number one. And I recall stories of him being out when the weather changed very much, in his car looking for kids. And that's a difficult decision to make. I know that people say that's what he gets paid for, but it's one of those deals where darn if you do, darn if you don't, you know what I'm saying? So, and I think he weighs into a lot, depends on a lot of people, and he comes down and sees for himself. The last snow event, I think they had, the people were closing schools before the end of the day, and Norwood Schools kept operating, and as it turned out, they got through the school day without any problem. I think there was testing involved there, so, you know, it's not our decision, we're there to support the schools, but I want to recognize the process that those schools and that superintendent go through when they make those kind of decisions. So I think it's something that should be discussed, and if you talk to them, I think they ought to be told that they did a good job also. So with that said, right now, the news stories are, they got people calling, send us your potholes, you know, and they got news crews out there again to potholes. We are once again ahead of them. Mr. Gears, weather permitting, we're buying hot mix, and we're getting on those, the hot mix plants are open, and we're buying that, so we are, we're getting out there as weather permitting as fast as we can, and trying to keep ahead of it before it gets, it gets too far ahead. You know, there's been discussions in the past, you know, what's the city's liability? Well, the city's liability, and following in the direction of the law department, once we know of something, then we've got a reasonable amount of time to get out and take care of it. I think one of the reasons that is, our potholes have been reduced is somewhere on these main streets, over a period of time, we've gotten grants and funds and everything else to redo streets, whether it be curbs, sidewalks, stormwater, water and everything else, Williams Avenue, Montgomery Road, Smith Road, you name it, and a lot of these streets have been done with no cost to the city. So if you remember, last year, there was a Channel 9 crew sat up there at Edmondson So if you remember last year, there was a Channel 9 crew sat up there at Edmondson and I-71 and they even brought their lunch. They sat there and showed the cop cops flying off. And now that's all done and that's all smooth so they can go somewhere in Cincinnati and get their news story. So, I mean, we are, Mr. Gears has got them out ahead of schedule and we will stay on it. And if you hear anything, call us and we'll get to it as humanly possible, weather permitting. We still do have some salt left. We were low at one time. We got a PO through and the finance committee and Mr. Stith helped us and got us through that. And then we got the salt ordered and we got it in and we still got some left. We were low, a couple of salt takers, but we still had some. But we used up all that access we had left over from a few years ago and hopefully we won't need any more. We have also received approval for improvements to B Street. I think if council remembers, we had passed that a few years ago. We were getting the details in for that. B Street will be between Norwood and Highland Avenue, stormwater, sidewalks, curves, water lines and resurfacing all the way up through there. So we have the details coming in on that in the next couple of weeks, but that project should be, if you remember, right, we had plans drawn up and everything ready to go. We should save some money on engineering plans because the plans were already drawn up. And there'll be a few minor changes, but once we get that done, that project will also start here soon. So, you know, there is some progress being made. Once again, I still feel that one of our goals and anybody else's, you know, in any management practice, you do the best and you get the most out of what you've got to work with. And I think that's what this city has done now for some time, so. One last thing. Eastern Park is on Saturday, March 28th at 9:30 at Waterworks Park. And that's where the kids come down by the thousands. I mean, they're just grabbing candy, you know, if you'd stop, they'll take it right out of your pocket. But there's kids all over down there and Jenny Wallace, every year goes out and finds donors and people that want to jump in and help and support it. And every year she comes across and every year those kids are down there, rain or shine. So if you, if you got a chance on March 28th at 9:30, go down there and watch it. It's, if you don't have your kids down there, your grandkids, it's worth seeing. So that'll be the 28th and hopefully there won't be any snow. So that's about it. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions of the mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question. We had a meeting, a tree board meeting earlier today and they asked, do we ever get notification of the community development block grant funding yet?
I've talked to Joe, I don't think so.
I don't think so either. Thank you.
When you, when we know, tree board will be first.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to other requests to address council. We have one, Mary Jaeger. I'm going to come forward and give us your name and address. And you'll have five minutes? Thanks.
Hi, my name's Mary Jaeger. I live on 2215 Adams Avenue, behind Kroger. Just quick, I did want to, kind of following up with what the mayor said. We got, I attended a charity event February 21st, right after one of those big snowstorms and as, so this is about 12:30 in the morning. I was trying to pull in my driveway and I got stuck. So my car was driving along the road and as my husband's trying to help, you know, we're trying to get the car out, there were police officers that were going in the neighborhood and they stopped and they helped us get our car out of the road. So I'm here to publicly thank them. Unfortunately, I can't remember their names, but I do appreciate for them to get out at probably 1 o'clock in the morning to help dig our car out was, I think, a little above and beyond their typical duties. I had talked to Donna before and she said it's good for council to hear good news too and so I thought I'll be up here and make sure everybody knows and the citizens of Norm know we've got great police officers out there willing to go the extra mile. And then secondly, just one thing, my son's part of Trail Life, he has service hours and one thing he asked about doing was seeing if there were people who needed snow, you know, like there's the ordinance to shovel the sidewalks. If there's something posted or a way that we could, I could direct him so that, not this year hopefully, maybe next year, that he could go out and those elderly or those who are sick and can't get out and do it, I'd certainly like a resource that I could go to and say, okay, here's some people that need some help. And he gets his service hours and Norwood gets the sidewalks cleared and the elderly get some help. So this is something I'd certainly be interested in learning or establishing or seeing if something can be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jaeger. Move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Wow. Mr. Sankar, yes? Okay. And move on to communications. The first is a letter from the mayor regarding mayor's court fines for January.
Ms. Donna M. Lake, President and Members of Norwood City Council, Norwood City Hall, RE, Mayor's Court Fines. Dear Madam President and Members of Council, enclosed, please find amended report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of January 2015. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
Move that the report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the mayor regarding mayor's court fines for February 2015.
Ms. Donna M. Lake, President and Members of Norwood City Council, Norwood City Hall, RE, Mayor's Court Fines. Dear Madam President and Members of Council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of February 2015. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
Move that this report be received and filed as well.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mark Gutentag regarding carryout liquor permit Trex transfer to Norwood, Ohio.
January 20, 2015. Councilman Joseph Sankar, Norwood City Council, 4645 Montgomery Road, Norwood, Ohio, 45212. RE, carryout liquor permit Trex transfer to Norwood, Ohio, Norwood Petro, Inc. Dear Councilman Sankar, I write as a follow-up to our telephone conversation of last fall. As you may recall, I represent Norwood Petro, Inc., which is the owner and operator of the service station located at 2265 Norwood Road, Norwood, Ohio, formerly a Swifty service station. My client is planning to expand the convenience store offering at the location to include beer and wine carryout. Norwood Petro, Inc. has filed an application for a new carryout liquor permit for the state of Ohio. However, the quota for such permits in Norwood available for direct issue from the state of Ohio is full. You may be aware that the state of Ohio allows liquor permits to be moved from one part of the state to another part of the state for the purposes of economic development, a Trex transfer. Within the past few years, the state legislature has unanimously twice amended the Ohio Revised Code to remove the long list of requirements necessary to facilitate the transfer of liquor permits from one part of the state to another. The remaining requirement to file a Trex transfer application is the acknowledgement of the municipality or township to which the permit will be transferred. See enclosed Trex transfer form. Once the Trex transfer application has been filed with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, it will go through the normal transfer application process, including notification to the city of Norwood as is done in every transfer, renewal and new permit application. The president of Norwood Petro, Inc. is Sandeep Patel. Mr. Patel is a businessman who currently owns four other service station slash convenience store locations. Three of the locations have Ohio carryout liquor permits and application is pending on the fourth location. None of Mr. Patel's locations have ever received a liquor violation. He takes great pride in this and trains his staff accordingly. For your convenience and review, I have enclosed the following. One, economic development Trex transfer form. Two, proposed Trex transfer location information. Three, brief tax, brief, sorry, excuse me, brief Trex law history. Four, Trex process summary. Five, liquor permit transfer process summary. Six, Ohio Revised Code 4303.29B2. And Norwood Petro, Inc. and Sandeep Patel are happy to be doing business in the city of Norwood and look forward to a long-lasting relationship with the city of Norwood. Please call me at your convenience with any thoughts. Thank you. Respectfully, Mark S. Gutentag.
Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I would recommend that the letter be received and filed and that the matter as far as signing the Trex form be referred to the Community Development Committee.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Mumper. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, a couple notes of clarification. I believe the letter that was meant to be read on council was the one dated March the 4th. However, that's okay. The other clarification is the letter which was read was dated January 20th of 2015. The clerk's secretary never ever did receive a copy of this letter to forward to me. I didn't receive a copy of this until into February via email from Mr. Gutten, Gutentag.
Is it Gutentag or Gutentag?
And at that time, I did not feel that it was as stated in here. You know, all it takes is one signature for this application to be submitted to the state. Granted, I'm the rep representative in that particular area, however, I didn't feel that just my signature would justify potentially the issuance of a transferred liquor license into the neighborhood. It also states that the mayor can sign that as well as the law director's office can sign the same form. So after I received this, I went and made a copy, gave it to the mayor's office as well. He didn't feel it was proper for him just to sign the form as well as the law director's office did not feel that they should just sign off on the application. So therefore, I reported back to Mr. Gutentag and said, you know, I'm referring this to the law department, please contact Mr. Brown, which is stated in the other, the other letter here. So the reason I put it in committee is it is, if the Trex form of application, once the city signs off and says, okay, yeah, go ahead and apply to the state for a Trex transfer liquor license, it then goes to the state and typically the state, they'll send it back to the council for review, if there's any disagreements or why it shouldn't be granted. However, our experience with the state Board of Liquor Control, when we've had any types of disagreements on liquor license, we've never really prevailed well in these areas. The concern is, in talking to some folks, is that this would be a liquor license that would be put into the Swifty station there on Norwood Avenue. And I'm not quite sure whether at that point in time they'd have to come and get a building permit to build a building in order to house the coolers and whether to be walk-in or is it, but so right now, they're asking for council to let them apply for a liquor permit, but we really don't have any real details on whether, what the overall plan is if this liquor permit would be granted by the state. Therefore, the reason I recommend putting it in community development would give the committee an opportunity to hear what the proposed plans would be for that piece of property and not, and let them hear a little more detail about it and then present it to council. Because if it's just going to be a liquor license just stuck in that same little building there or if they're going to build a whole new store, I think those are some details that we need to know before we apply for a, you know, a Trex transfer. So that's my reason, that's the explanation for why it is appearing here before council and that's the reason I recommend putting it in the community development.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Sankar, we didn't, there wasn't anything in our packet from March, the letter, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I apologize if it was the wrong one, but there was, yeah, there's nothing in our packet, so. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and to place the matter into the Community Development Committee. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. The next is just the economic development Trex transfer form. Do you, I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume, what's your pleasure? Would you like to place that in the Community Development Committee as well? Mr. Thornbury?
Yes, Madam President, yes, I would agree that this would also be included with the discussion in the community development.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Mr. Berkowitz, do you have any advice or is this, any comments? I just offer to you in case you want to say anything.
Thank you, Madam President. It's really up to council how to proceed as to this matter, pretty much as Mr. Sankar explained with the last. If there are questions as to the details of the proposal, then whether it's in a committee meeting or by way of some other means for council to get more information, then that is certainly prerogative.
To notify your office for any questions? Thank you. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file and place it into Community Development. Call the roll, please.
It's good, I'm sorry to say. You're asking for any other discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just, I'm assuming that has officially been put into the committee, so we're having committee meeting. Just to say that that date, the typical date for the Community Development Committee meeting is the first Monday of the month, so in this case, it will be April 6th at, do we do 6th or 6th? At 5:30 PM.
Here in council chambers.
Here in council chambers, yes.
So the Community Development meeting again, April the 6th at 5:30 here in council. Thank you, Mr. Thornbury. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Clark?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Thornbury. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Whittington?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Thornbury?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.